This is the September 4th, 2019 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We're going to begin it with the Pledge of Allegiance and we're all invited to join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04 Storybook Homes in Wisconsin; number 2, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park; number 3, 2010-06 KVC Holdings; under waiver requests, 4, 773 Scholar States and Comac, and that's it.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on any of the matters that were just read for which the Planning Department is requesting be adjourned? Seeing none in motion, please.
I recommend we follow the Planning Department's recommendation.
You move to adjourn all those matters as requested by the Planning Department?
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so adjourned.
The first item under new hearings is a final subdivision, number 1156 Map of Open Meadow for Tsulunga. It's a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This matter involves a request from the Board of Zoning Appeals to the Planning Board to review and issue a recommendation regarding variance requests currently pending before the BZA. It's case number 18204 within the above referenced subdivision. The yield of the property in full compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations is one lot. The applicant has requested the following variances to effectively increase the yield to two lots. On Lot 1, it's reduce minimum lot frontage from 150 feet to 68 feet, reduce minimum side yard from 24 feet to 12 feet, reduce total side yard from 60 feet to 36 feet. And on Lot 2, reduce minimum lot area from 43,560 square feet to 35,095 square feet due to environmentally sensitive land, steep slopes, reduce minimum lot frontage from 150 feet to 77 feet, reduce minimum side yard from 24 feet to 12 feet, and reduce total side yard from 60 feet to 35 feet. The Planning Board has the authority to grant many variances related to subdivisions, however, pursuant to Section 248-31 of the subdivision regulations. The Planning Board does not have the authority to increase density. The BZA is the only board with the authority to grant such variances. This is the second time the BZA is requesting the Planning Board to make a recommendation regarding variances for the above referenced subdivision. The first request by the BZA, May 12th, 2015, was for variances related to a flag lot subdivision, altering steep slopes and reduction of lot area. The Planning Department advised the Planning Board to recommend denial of the flag lot variances in its memorandum dated June 17th, 2015, for the following reasons. One, a flag lot would increase the potential of slower response times of police, fire, and emergency services because the home would be difficult to see from the street. Two, a home behind the existing home would reduce the privacy of the front lot and the lot to the west. Three, a long driveway to the house behind the existing house would create unwarranted noise and fumes adjacent to the existing home on the property and the home to the west. Four, a flag lot would tend to increase the potential for noncompliance with the zoning, such as multifamily residence and/or business land uses. Subsequently, the Planning Board recommended approval of the variances to the BZA. However, the BZA denied the variances on October 13th, 2015. On June 12th, 2019, the applicant submitted a revised layout of the subdivision, eliminating the flag lot design and proposing two lots of the same approximate frontage. This application is to subdivide an 87,282-square-foot parcel into two single-family lots. There's a single-family residence proposed to remain on Lot 2. The property has approximately 182 feet of frontage on Sunken Meadow Road. The site is zoned R-43 and is surrounded by R-43 zoning and developed with single-family homes. Due to the steep slopes and lot frontage, the yield of the property in full compliance with the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations is one lot. In order to subdivide the property into two lots, the proposal requires the above referenced variances. Section 277-6 of Town Law authorizes the BZA to grant area variances within a subdivision, but requires that the BZA request a written recommendation from the Planning Board concerning the proposed variances. Town Law does not describe the criteria that the Planning Board is supposed to use in developing a recommendation to the BZA. However, it seems likely that the recommendation should be based around the Planning Board's core mission regarding subdivision approval, which pursuant to Section 277-1 of Town Law is to evaluate whether the subject property can be used safely for building purposes without danger to health or peril from fire, flood, drainage, or other menace to neighboring properties, or the public health, safety, and welfare. This recommendation does not examine the requested variances with respect to the five-area variance criteria described in Section 267B of Town Law, as the BZA is tasked with evaluating the requested variances with respect to those criteria. The applicant's revised layout has addressed many of the concerns the Planning Department had with the original flag lot layout mentioned above. Eliminating a house behind a house decreases response time of police, fire, and emergency services. Additionally, shifting the location of the proposed house to be side-by-side eliminates the privacy concerns to neighboring properties. The house no longer faces adjoining backyards. Although the lot frontage and side yard and total side yard variances are substantial, it appears there is adequate frontage on Sunken Meadow Road to build one additional house and meet the goals mentioned in Section 277-1 of Town Law by providing planting buffers to mitigate impacts to adjoining property owners. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration, Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2019, Board of Zoning Appeals Variance Recommendation for Number 1156 Map of Open Meadow. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a recommendation regarding area variances associated with the subdivision number 1156 Map of Open Meadow, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve the variances associated with the subdivision number 1156 Map of Open Meadow for the following reasons. One, the creation of a lot and construction of one additional single-family dwelling is anticipated not to create danger to health or peril from fire, flood, drainage, or other menace to neighboring properties or public health, safety, and welfare. Two, the revised layout has eliminated the flag lot design, therefore alleviating the concerns and reasons for denial in the Planning Department's memorandum dated June 17th, 2015. Second, resolve that this recommendation pertains solely to the determination of yield and not to the proposed lot layout, extent of recreating, building location, public improvements, or other aspects of subdivision design within the purview of the Planning Board. And third, resolve that nothing contained herein shall be construed or deemed as implicitly or explicitly approving or endorsing on the merits any subsequent request for approval of any subdivision for this property, whether or not the request arises out of any area variances granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals for said property.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I'd just like to point out a couple of things. Matt, could you put the other map on there? As you can see from the map that's up on the screen, the blue outlined parcel is the subject parcel. You also can see that there's a road called Martin Gale Gate, and that was done in the early '90s, this subdivision. And the Planning Board approved this subdivision, and as you can see, by approving the road, the way it swirls around those lots, these plots got access. They were very long lots, so those lots now had access to Martin Gale, Martin Gale Gate, and made for a very nice subdivision. The only thing, if you look at the blue outlined lot, my client's lot, they could have tilted that cul-de-sac a little bit south and east, and we would have had access just like everybody else did. Why the Planning Board at the time didn't do it, I don't know. And I guess even the first time when we came before your Board and we asked for an approval of a flag lot, notwithstanding the Planning Department's recommendation, the Board recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve it. However, the Board of Zoning Appeals didn't like a flag lot, or for whatever other reason, the Board of Zoning Appeals denied the application. As you can see, my client went back to the drawing board, and now there are two lots that front on Meadow Glen Road.
Sunken Meadow.
Sunken Meadow Road, there you go. And we think it, and we agree with the Planning Department, it makes a much better application and subdivision. The steep slopes were created many years ago on the existing house parcel. We're not altering any further steep slopes. So we asked the Board for its favorable recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and maybe this time they'll approve it. Thank you.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this matter? If you do, please come up to the microphone, give your name and address.
My name is Donald Sweetser, 7, Sunken Meadow Road. I'm right next door.
So if we're facing the property on Sunken Meadow Road, are you to the right or to the left?
I'm to the left. My concern, I have a concern with our water table. The water table can fluctuate on my property from five, from five to eight feet. So we have pumps in our basements, and I'm just wondering what could possibly happen with excavation of two homes, changing the land, and we're going to get more water. Next door, they have a pond from the amount of water that comes out of the soil. And it's there about six months, five months a year from the high-water table. Now, I get, I have pumps in my basement that run periodically with the water table. And I know the neighbor next door has two pumps in her basement. I'm concerned with that, and I'm also concerned with the amount of property that we have. We're supposed to have one acre. It's one-acre zone, and he doesn't have two full acres the way he's laying this property out. He's not putting it on one acre and then another house on the other acre. I wonder what the legalization is with that. I'm not a lawyer.
I understand. Is that it?
That's it.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I don't think any of these things that you're bringing up are really issues before us tonight, because as Mr. Colado read, we're only dealing tonight with whether we are going to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they give them the variances with respect to the difference between the house and the various lot lines around the house. That's number one. So I don't think any of those issues that you just mentioned are really before us tonight. That if we approve, we make a recommendation to the BZA to approve it, and it does approve, get approved, and they go forward, there'll be some point down the road where he's going to come for a subdivision, and at that point, perhaps your issues may be more properly addressed. Number two, you mentioned excavation of two houses. I believe he's only going to put in one new house. The existing house is going to stay there, and from the plan, you can see it up there, I have it right here, the new house is going to be, if you're facing the property from Sunken Meadow Road-
Yes.
-to the left of the existing house, but back further, perhaps, so it's going to be about 196 feet back off the road. So it's going to be back further from the existing house, but it's not going to be back so far that you can't see it.
There's a dwelling there now, in a log cabin, a three-bedroom log cabin.
I believe that's going to be removed.
I assume that's going to be taken down.
It's going to be removed.
Okay.
So we understand your concerns, and I'm sure at the appropriate time-
Another meeting.
Yeah, it'll be down the road. Basically, what was happening here, again, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, not us, should only give him the variances that he's requesting to build on the difference between the houses and the property lines. But our function here is to recommend to the BZA whether to grant it or not. That's all we're doing here.
Okay.
Then it goes over to them.
Keeps going.
And if they grant it, it continues on. If they deny it, then he's got to go back to the drawing board again.
Okay.
But thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your information, sir.
Just keep an eye on the property when anything else comes up.
Will do. I'll let you know.
There'll be a sign posted, and you can always call the Planning Department if you want to make any inquiries about this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Good night, gentlemen.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution. Anybody else wishes to be heard on this matter? Any questions from any member of the Board on this matter? Seeing none, with respect to item number 1156 Map of Open Meadow, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So closed. And with respect to the same application, number 1156 Map of Open Meadow, I move that we adopt the resolutions as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So approved.
The next item is number 6, number 1180 Old Dock Road Land Division in Kings Park. The applicant requests final approval to subdivide a parcel with an existing one-family dwelling and an existing two-family dwelling into two lots. The applicant states that this subdivision proposes no further development of the land. The reason for the application is to split the existing dwellings into two separate tax lots. The final subdivision, number 1180 Map of Old Dock Road, is comprised of one tax lot that fronts Old Dock Road and Church Street in Kings Park. The parcel is 16,367 square feet and is located in the RM7 zoning district, which is 7,500-square-feet lot area per dwelling unit. To the west and south is zoned RM7, to the east is zoned R-43, and to the north is zoned R-10. The site is surrounded by single-family and two-family dwellings, as well as the Church of St. Joseph and RJO Intermediate School to the east. The topography of the site is flat and contains no environmentally sensitive land. The subdivision proposes to keep the existing single-family dwelling and two-family dwelling. On April 17th, 1990, the Board of Zoning Appeals authorized the issuance of a certificate of existing use for a two-family dwelling and a single-family dwelling on the property. As a result, this effectively increased the number of dwelling units permitted on the subject property from two dwelling units, one per 7,500 square feet, to three dwelling units. The proposed subdivision will not increase the number of dwelling units on the site. The proposed subdivision requires the following variances. Lot 1, reduce minimum lot area per dwelling unit from 7,500 square feet to 3,750 square feet; reduce minimum side yard from eight feet to five feet for the existing two-family dwelling; and increase the maximum allowable paved service in the rear yard from 25% to 31%. Lot 2, reduce minimum rear yard from 35 feet to two feet for the existing single-family dwelling and covered patio; reduce minimum side yard from eight feet to five feet for the existing single-family dwelling; reduce minimum side yard from eight feet to one feet to the existing 151-square-foot shed; reduce minimum setback to a property line from four feet to zero feet for the existing eight-foot-by-18-foot cabana; and increase maximum allowable paved surface in the side yard from 25% to 100%; increase maximum allowed paved surface in the rear yard from 25% to 99%. The Planning Board has the authority to grant these variances pursuant to Section 322-30.4 of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Department recommends approval of these variances because the existing structures have certificates of occupancy or compliance, and the subdivision will not change the impact of the structures or pavement on the adjoining properties. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have reviewed the subdivision application and have found it acceptable. The Department of Environment and Waterways has not completed the SECRE review. Suffolk County Department of Health Services has not approved this subdivision. It appears, based on the information provided by the Health Department, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 81441 is located in the proposed Suffolk County Sewer District Number 6 extension. The Planning Department has reviewed the request and has found it acceptable, subject to the following comments. One, the surrounding zoning districts shall be added to the key map. Two, the driveway on Lot 2 is encroaching on Lot 1. We recommend the portion of this driveway on Lot 1 be removed and be positioned no closer than one foot from the north property line of Lot 2. Three, modifications to the Building Zone Ordinance shall only apply to those conditions and structures that exist at the time of subdivision approval. Any new structures or alterations to existing structures shall comply with the standard dimensional requirements in the Building Zone Ordinance. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $1,250 has been recommended for the subdivision for concrete monuments and an ASB build survey. The Planning Department recommends the Board recess the public hearing until the Department of Environment and Waterways completes the SECRE review. And the affidavit of posting has been handed to us.
Okay. Just checking. I was looking on my agenda. It doesn't appear to be the same thing that you just read. But I heard what you just read, so.
What's missing?
It seems to be different.
Is it missing a page?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. One of the pages was behind.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for your help. The last page is behind the memorandum letter and behind the drawing. All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. As Mr. Colado said, I submitted the affidavit of posting at the beginning of the meeting. Obviously, we agree with the recommendation of the Planning Department, but there's a big problem here, and this problem exists because the DEW in town, who is not the lead agency for a SECRE recommendation, this Board is, as you well know. The Health Department, wherein we did have a hearing some months ago, indicated they would approve our application. However, they said we need the SECRE because we have to know that the Town of Smithtown finds the SECRE acceptable. In other words, issue a negative declaration. But what happens is, the DEW is taking a position, particularly Howard Barton, that we're not going to do anything until the Health Department does it first. And if they don't do it, we're not going to do it. So here I am in a big conundrum, which isn't the first time. I can tell you with specific personal knowledge that the Board of Zoning Appeals has about 20 cases right now where we're waiting for the DEW to make a recommendation. All they do is recommend to you. This Board makes a decision as to SECRE and whether it has a negative effect on the environment, which, as you know, means no effect, and it's a good thing. But if we continue this way, nothing is going to get done. And I don't know the answer to it, other than to say, this Board has a prerogative to do whatever it wants because you vote the SECRE, not the DEW. All they do is make a recommendation. So what do I do? What do I do for a client that's trying to do a good thing? If we, if you grant the subdivision, you're going to have two separate parcels which can be sold because my client's moving away, and two separate owners is certainly a lot better than a guy or a company that owns two dwelling houses on one piece of property, which he could keep forever that way and sell it that way. But it certainly is much better to have individual owners who care about their property. But honestly, I don't know what to do. I guess I could bring a lawsuit against the DEW because they failed to act, but that's an expensive proposition. I don't know. Maybe the Board could find it in its administrative heart to write a letter to the DEW and say, hey, what are you doing here? We need a recommendation. If they're going to recommend a denial, fine, let them recommend a denial, but they're not doing anything, which is worse.
It's only a recommendation anyway.
I'm sorry?
It's only a recommendation from them anyway.
That's correct. It's only a recommendation.
We'll give it due credence, but like you said, we make the decisions.
And I understand that Board members feel compelled to listen to the experts with respect to environmental issues, but there is no environmental issue here. It's obvious. It's just a question of what administrative body, what agency is going to give in first. And I know the Health Department's not going to do it because they say they're a separate agency.
Suffolk County Health Department.
Suffolk County, that's correct.
Have you seen this situation in the past where it was a standoff between the-
Yes.
-our DEW and the county Health Department? They each wanted the other one to go first?
Yep.
How are those resolved?
They weren't.
So I guess you left 21, huh?
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. It's really a serious situation, and hopefully, maybe the Board at the very least could write a letter and say, what's going on? Because otherwise, my client is going to end up selling this to some landlord, so to speak, an absentee owner, and, you know, that situation will go on, and it doesn't make sense.
Well, I do agree with your point that it probably makes sense for the neighborhood to have two separate owners-
Right.
...and an owner and who knows what else.
Two separate landlords.
Yeah, could be that too, but you have two separate families in those two houses. Well, the Planning Department has recommended that this matter be kept open and recessed, awaiting the SECRE. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to recess it, and then we're going to look into what our options are in trying to get this matter moved. And obviously, during that time, you can look into whatever options you might have to do the same thing. We might not have any options, you know. We have to get some further information on that, and certainly, before we could issue a negative declaration, we have to have some information on the environmental issues. Now, I'm not saying we would definitely need a full recommendation from DEW, although that's the way it's usually done, but we have to give them another opportunity to respond, and at the same time, we have to look into our options as to whether there's anything we can do to move this to conclusion, because we don't want to carry it on our calendar forever either.
Matthew, do you have any indication as to when they may make a recommendation?
No, because I think they're waiting for Health Department.
Health Department.
So I think that's, nobody knows.
Do you know, Matt, have they waited the Health Department every time in the past or not?
I believe they do, yes.
They do? So Mr. Colado says they always wait for the Health Department. I don't know if that's the case or not.
No, he's correct, and nothing happens, because, oh, I'm sorry.
But you're not sure he's really with the Health Department, no?
Sometimes we can get the Health Department, I can't even remember the last time, but one or two times in the last 20 or 30 years, the Health Department has given their recommendation. See, usually, it's not a Board of Review case. This was a Board of Review case with the Health Department because of the smallness of the lots. As you know, the Health Department now requires 20,000 square feet per lot unless you have prior tax bills and all that stuff. So that's why we went to the Board of Review, and the Health Department's saying, fine, just let us know that the town has no issues. So, again, I have this problem with the Board of Appeals. Obviously, I have this problem here, and- here, and I think it may be corrected in the future, but, you know, sometimes you can't wait five or six or eight months.
I understand, and it's a tough predicament that you're in. It seems like what is going to be done there is basically drawing a lot line, and, right, nothing's going to be altered.
I'm sorry.
The two houses are going to stay there, correct?
Oh, yeah, they have, they're noncompliant.
Nothing's going to be altered physically on the property. Is that true?
What's that?
Nothing is going to be altered physically on the property.
No, it's going to be the same thing, except there's going to be a line now. And, you know, Lot A would be sold to somebody, and Lot B would be sold to someone. It'd be just like any other.
Right, two tax bills.
Any other house in Kings Park.
All right, well, then, that raises some more questions, but I think, my opinion, I'm going to follow the planning department's recommendation that the matter be recessed, and during that time, I'm going to explore, and anybody else can obviously help, the planning department will help, we're all going to explore what our options are to try to move this to conclusion.
Great, thank you.
Because it seems like it's a tough position, but if nothing is going to be altered on the property, I seem, I tend to wonder why there are environmental issues to begin with because nothing's being changed.
Nothing's being changed. There is no environmental issue, but obviously, I'm not an expert in that, so.
Neither am I.
I know.
But we're going to try to find out what our options are so we can, you know, help this thing get to conclusion one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this? Any questions from any member of the board on this? All right. With respect to number eleven eighty, Old Dock Road Land Division, Kings Park, I move that the hearing remain open and that the matter be recessed. We probably should pick a date certain to do that, so we don't have to repost it again. Maybe the first meeting in October.
That's fine. Is that the second?
October second?
That's, yeah, if that's, if you want to do that, it's fine.
Okay, so we're going to move to recess this matter to the first hearing of this board in the month of October, which we're advised will be October second. That gives everybody about a month to see what can happen or can be done to try to eliminate or break this log jam and get this matter to conclusion one way or the other.
Thank you.
All right, next thing is adoption of the minutes of August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. So I move that we adopt the minutes of the August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting of this board.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Anybody inclined to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?